I'll call to order the meeting of Monday, February the 25th. And if the clerk would please read the roll.
Councilmember Archibald.
Here.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Lewandowski.
Here.
Councilmember Mohler. Councilmember Ruiz.
Here.
Mayor Rep.
Here. You have the minutes from the meeting of February the 11th before you. Is there a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewandowski. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Cole. Is there any additions or deletions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The minutes will stand as submitted. We have several presentations tonight. If the clerk would please read the first one.
Laura Newsom, Executive Director, will discuss the St. Clair County Council on Aging.
Mayor Rep., City Council Members, Mr. Brown, Ms. Child, good evening. The city of Port Huron and the Council on Aging entered into a cooperative working agreement in 1970 to provide transportation to the city's elderly. The city provided the vehicles, paid for the maintenance and repair, and the Council on Aging implemented the program with the stipulation that all of the drivers would be volunteers. This program was the first of its kind in the nation, and we have documentation to support that. It has been extremely successful over the 42-year lifespan of the program. During that time, 647,082, 647,082, units of service, or rides, were provided to the senior citizens living within the city limits of Port Huron. As in life, all good things come to an end, and change is inevitable. Due to budget constraints and funding priorities, the city of Port Huron was forced to discontinue the program this past year. However, realizing the value of the service provided to its residents, they signed the titles of the city cars over to the Council on Aging. Due to the generosity of the voters, the senior village dollars now fund this service, which has been incorporated into the Council on Aging's transportation program. But I'm here this evening to express our heartfelt thanks for 42 years of exemplary service to the seniors in the city of Port Huron, and we are very grateful. While I'm here, I would also like to share something that happened a few weeks ago during the Christmas season. I received a phone call that someone was coming over to see me from the city offices. I was handed a Christmas card with a message from the employees at the administration office. Instead of exchanging Christmas gifts with each other, the staff decided to donate to the Meals on Wheels program for the seniors and brought us $695. I was overwhelmed by their generosity and caring, and I want the residents of Port Huron to know that not only is this city run by capable, competent professionals, but also by those who have a heart. It was the most wonderful thing that I have seen in years, and again, we're grateful. I have said this before and will continue to voice this statement because I strongly believe it. Communities that care for their most vulnerable citizens, that being children and the elderly, are better places to live, work, and play, and Port Huron has always been one of those places. So on behalf of the Board of Directors, the staff, and the seniors at the Council on Aging, I thank you for your ongoing support of the senior population in Port Huron, and we look forward to partnering with you in the future in our joint goal of serving the elderly. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Laura, very much. Presentation number two.
Robert Clegg, Director of Public Works, will give a report on the Sperry's Vault.
Except Mr. Clegg is not here, so I believe it's Ken Kingsley from Tetra Tech is going
Thank you. Mayor, City Council, City Manager, I'm just going to talk from a few slides. Do you have a copy of my report? That we did? Okay. Just real quick, if you want to look at the picture behind you. The Sperry Vault that we're talking about, for consideration here from a structural design, is actually about 15 feet wide, and it runs the full length of Grand River for about 130 feet, and then it also turns toward to go down Superior. The interior of the vault is supported by steel columns, and actually about four feet from the outside wall to the first row of columns, about five and a half feet to the next row, and about five feet to the next wall. These columns that are there, there's four columns per section, and right now, that outside wall that's there is really under the curb line of Grand River. The way the building, that slab is designed, there's concrete beams about every 17 feet holding that outside wall, so basically Grand River doesn't fall into the basement. And so basically, there are 28 columns installed in that vault area that is weak with the poor concrete slab on top. Can we go to the next slide, please? Okay, whoops. I'm not sure you can, if you can, tough to see it, it shouldn't be turned, but this is, this is the center section going from beam to beam. And what you have is, if you could flip it, you can see from the first picture, you've got double two-by-12 supports and going in between the concrete beams that are perpendicular. You've got two-by-eights all the way through, and this type of double two-by-12 structure with two-by-eights goes the whole length of Grand River. And this is providing right down to the middle of the slab, that is the total length of the vault area. So with that, and on the other side of the two-by-eights, you've got plywood sheeting right to the underside of the slab. Each of the columns is designed, or there's markers on the columns, that can hold six and a half tons per column. So with this center support, and with the other supports to the outside wall and to the inside wall, that, the slab, or the surface slab that's out there, that vault slab on top sidewalk, is structurally supported with all the cribbing and everything that's in that vault area right now. So basically, that slab is not going anywhere. Okay? That slab is deteriorating. Next slide, if you could. Okay, that's, this is shown from the inside wall to the first double two-by-12 supporting there. And that inside structure, along with the center structure, along with the outside structure, is all supported by all the steel pipes that go from the underside of the two-by-12s to the basement floor. Okay? Next slide, please. Two slides of the outside, and really, basically, so you've got a two-by-12, double two-by-12 down here, you've got a double two-by-12 down here, you've got two-by-eights every 12, 18 inches on center, all the way down through this whole thing, and then you've got your steel pipe posts underneath, basically supporting the slab. So from the initial design, with the pipe supports that are there, basically, that slab isn't going anywhere. It's structurally sound with the cribbing system underneath it. Over time, though, that slab is, from the inside, it leaks. It's showing a lot of effervescence of water going through, and that's why the coating that's on there was preventing that from happening. Go one last slide, and you can see numerous spots to where you're getting, you're just getting the existing coating that was on there that is spalling and making for an unsafe condition for a trip and fall. Okay? Outside of repairing those, those are going to get larger over time due to free slaw. Basically, sort of repairing those temporarily till, till basically the slab gets replaced. I mean, over time, the slab itself is going to deteriorate more, but right now, you can see on the backside, there's trailers parked on there as such, and there's really a lot more, there's a lot more weight that can be put here than normal pedestrian traffic. But again, over time, short of maintaining the surface, it's going to deteriorate. So for now, we're saying that the slab and its supporting system is structurally sound. We took the lights off when we were down in there, and there's no evidence of daylight. We were in the dark, walked through there, we had flashlights and looked at our, making sure we didn't fall over or anything, and basically, there's no access to daylight or anything like that. So that's really, I have to say, you've got a structured slab that's fine with the supporting system that's there.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone on council who has any questions for Mr. Kingsley? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Excuse me. Do you know where the water's coming from?
It's coming through.
Through the sidewalk?
It's coming through the sidewalk, it's coming through the joint on the backside of curb, it's coming through the areas that, where the adhesion, where the application that was on top of that has gone away, and it's just, it's coming across at the building faces, or at the face between the sidewalk and the wall. It's just whatever cracks are there, it's just, and after a rain evented, it does leak, and on a dry condition, it dries, it's dry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Along with, our next presentation is relative to the Sperry's project also, so the clerk would please announce that.
Larry Jones and Dave White will give a report on the Sperry's project.
Larry Jones from Landmark Development and Sperry's Landmark, Port Huron, and first thing I want to do is thank the city mayor, the manager, and all the council for all the help that they, you know, do for us in this city. And I want to introduce Dave White, which is our developer from Landmark Development.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you for having us tonight. One thing in doing my research to get ready for tonight is, this is Sperry's birthday. It's 90 years old this year, and we're working to bring it back to be an integral part of the downtown of Port Huron. What first, I have some slides tonight. The first slide is an artist's conception of the Sperry Building and what we are working toward. That is a picture of the roof. The roof, new roofing material is in the back. In the front are some of what they call air coolers or swamp coolers and the piping. After removal, this is Reasonable Roofing of Port Huron working on the roof and in between the infrequent snowstorms that have been happening this winter. Again, there's a better shot of the old air handling system for the Sperry's building, which has been declared that it's unusable, not repairable. There's some of the new roof that is going on. It's a green roof, has green roof components. That was, been done in the last month or so. That is a old elevator housing for Mr. Sperry's elevator. There was a private elevator car in the building for use by Mr. Sperry. We petitioned the state historic preservation office and the National Park Service asking that that be removed so we could have a cleaner roof. That was granted last month, and there's the area where the doghouse used to be, as some of the additional roofing is taking place. There's another picture of the unit that was replaced, and then there's some more of the roofing that's being done by the gentleman from Reasonable Roofing. This is the basement storage area where much of the Sperry's and House of Denmark left various display items for us. We have since cleaned that area out, and this is what it looks like as of last week. Obviously, the first floor is Sperry's, that's very familiar to many people in Port Huron, all with different memories. This is now the main floor of Sperry's. The water that you see on the ground is from the roof, thus the reason we are replacing it. Again, another first floor shot toward the back of the first floor, and along that side where we've opened up the windows to let more light into the structure. This is the second floor of Sperry's. I was reminded by my wife that this was the women's area, and this is what it looks like now. We're clearing it out because the tenants that we are showing the building to were having a hard time visualizing their businesses in Sperry's when it looked like an empty department store. Again, another second floor shot, and again, with everything removed, up to the area where the old beauty shop used to be. This is obviously the beauty shop area, and we've cleaned that out. Another shot from the other way, and then the restroom area, and then it's all been removed. We're now up on the third floor of Sperry's, which was not used, I understand, by the House of Denmark, but was where the offices were and various other items sold. And Sperry's was a full-service department store for the town, and this is the third floor now. We've uncovered some windows on the north wall on the third floor of Sperry's that probably haven't been viewed since the 20s or 30s, as Sperry's built walls to cover those over. It is our plan to reopen those windows to add additional lighting onto the third floor of Sperry's. This was Sperry's motto on the one wall that we took down, just so everyone could see that, and then that's the area where all of that was. Those windows are looking over Huron Avenue. Down on the first floor, this would be the side closest to Diana's Sweet Shop, and this is the area after we removed the old department store leanings. The front stairway going downstairs, again, cleared out for allowing more window space. And these are the costs that have been, a private investment that has been done by the owner and the development team to get Sperry's to where it is today. There's quite self-explanatory building purchase, environmental abatement, the construction of the roof, the environmental consulting, general consulting, demolition dumpsters. To date, Larry has said they've pulled away 40 dumpsters from the site. We have subcontractor fees, architectural fees, we repaid the DDA loan, and the property taxes that were paid last June by, and this December by the development. We are working now in the rent-up phase. We have taken through clients. We have turned down some potential tenants which we felt did not fit well into the Sperry's building, which is one of the largest retail spaces in downtown Port Huron, an iconic building, and we wanted to have a signature tenant in there. We've had national tenants in, we've had international tenants in. This week, we have a national tenant coming, our realtor is bringing them through, but we want to present the best that we can with Sperry's. There is a mustiness to the odor, we know that from the roof. Part of that's coming from the vault. We know that too because of the water infiltration, and we just want to have, because of the economy, the way it is so hard now, and the vacancy factor in downtown, we want the building to be able to show its best character. Mayor, if you have any questions, Larry and I'd be happy to answer them.
Open it up to the council members. Does anyone on council have any questions? Yes?
Just a comment. I had the chance to go down there, I think it was last Friday, and go through the building. There's a lot going on, but there's a, there's a lot that's not going on, but I, but I have to compliment because they have some, they have some, some good ideas, and I really think that before we evaluate, I, like myself, and probably a lot of others, people in Port Huron have complained over a number of years of what's being done up there. Well, there is things being done. They don't look pretty yet, but there are things being done, and some of the lofts that are proposed, I think, are good, and there, there's some good ideas, but you've got a lot to accomplish and.
We do, and we've been at it for a while. We've had, Mr. Johnson and I, and Mr. Jones and Mr. Marcel have been at it about three years, but we've had the building a little over a year. There was a lien on the property that took 10 months to get off, so we've actually been in the building and had control of the building a little over a year, and during that time, we've done this, and we've been marketing the building to tenants, both locally and nationally.
And the other thing, for the record, the roof that they're putting on is state-of-the-art. It's called Durlass. It's a 20-year, 25-year construction warranty on it, and for home use, it's guaranteed for 50 years, so.
And it has a green component, which is, which is a requirement of the Betty Grant and other tax credits.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Cole.
I would like to ask a question just about, I know what we see on the outside, we don't see much happening on the outside, it sounds like there's a lot going on inside. Are there any plans for the near future for taking care of some of the issues maybe on the exterior building, just so it's?
We are working with an architect, and we'll be in the next month or so, to start the drawings for the, what we call the building envelope. Those then have to go to the state for shipholme approval, and then for approval with the National Park Service. So yes, there are plans. We're hoping to tie that in with getting a tenant, an anchor tenant in, so we have some more funding that we can work on. But yes, we, we're working with the architect as we speak.
Okay. Then I guess just a comment that I, I'd like to ask the council when we get to that part of the agenda, to reconsider the bids for the vault project, so.
Do you want that during the, like, the, from the city manager part of it?
Um, yes.
When we have the bids on there?
Yep, and from the city manager part, bring that up again.
I think the whole purpose was, as council had asked last meeting, that, you know, the vault was before us, but we hadn't heard an update in quite some time, and of course, the viewpoint of a lot of people is nothing was being done, so I.
Mr. Brown has asked if we can come back quarterly or whenever he wishes, and that's fine.
I mean, it's nice for the community to know that you are progressing and that it's not just a dead issue, because it is an iconic building that's been there for a long time, and I think everybody wants to see it.
Everybody knows where Sperry's is.
That's true. Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Jones or Mr. White?
Just a comment, just I'm glad you've come back quarterly, and I would ask if you do that, just to keep you surprised.
That's fine.
I have to ask this, and I know you're courting people to be in your building and such, any thought, any, just a timeframe, what's your, what's your best guess as to when you're looking at?
When we can get, when we get an anchor tenant or a majority of the first floor rented, we're kicking off the project. Because the basement, we're working with various nonprofits in the community for the incubator, we've had some other profits, other projects that the owner of it himself may fund, and so we just need that one major tenant. And if, cross your fingers, if everything goes well this week with the one that we're talking to, he, that's it. That'll be a major tenant.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
We have one more presentation.
Introduction of Dan Mangai, Operations Chief of the Fire Division.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. I bring to you a familiar face from the Port Huron Fire Department. I want to formally announce to you and the community that we have chosen Daniel E. Mangai to be the Fire Operations Chief, and he'll be running the day-to-day operations of the suppression service for the Fire Department. Dan's been employed by the city for quite an extensive period. He started out in 1986 as a police cadet and as an intern, manual control officer. He joined the city full-time in 1989 when he was hired in as a communications operator and dispatch. He started his career in firefighting with Port Huron Township Fire Department in 1989, and he joined the Port Huron Fire Department full-time in 1992. He's been a firefighter since that point, and he's rose to the ranks from promotions to lieutenant, captain, and battalion chief in 2011, and now he's here as our Fire Operations Chief. You know, we went through a pretty extensive process in trying to identify the right candidates, and I was very pleased that all the candidates on an internal basis were excellent. It was a very difficult decision, but I believe this is the person to lead us forward. Dan's here tonight with his family, and I want to announce his promotion. Dan?
Thank you. Chief.
Mayor Rep., Council Members, City Manager Brown, I'm proud to be in front of you this evening. It's been an honor to have been appointed your Fire Operations Chief. I look forward to working with Director Reeves and the members of the Fire Department, Fire Division. Since beginning my employment with the city 27 years ago, I've established a connection in this, my hometown, between the citizens, fellow employees, various departments, both within the city organization and many from other adjoining agencies. I'm enthused to further these connections in my role of leading the Fire Division. As you all know, the Fire Department is made up of many caring, dedicated professionals who also are in various stages of forming connections within this community. The men and women of your Fire Department are proud to serve. It's an exciting time to have been named the leader of these individuals, as our Fire Department adapts to the challenges of providing safe and effective service. The employees have been willing to step forward and bring ideas worthy of discussion and consideration to assure that the citizens of the city of Port Huron and all who we serve receive the best possible service that they expect and deserve. If at any time you have questions or wish to discuss any issues regarding the Fire Division of our, our newly-formed Department of Public Safety, I welcome your contact. I thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening, but I too have a support crew with me tonight. If I could just make some brief introductions, my wife of 22 years, Ronnie Mangai, my two daughters, Emily and Natalie, and my two.
Stand up.
My two big brothers, my oldest brother, Ed Mangai, who is a familiar name to you all, retired after several years of service as equipment mechanic with the Fire Department, and my next brother, also an older brother, John Mangai. Come from a family of service, railroad family. Our dad was a special deputy. We've had a service to the community in our blood, if you will, and I plan to carry that forward in my dad's legacy. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. We move on now to public comment time. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council, if you'll come forward and give us your name, and you have four minutes, you just need to come up to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council, City Manager Brown. My name's Patrick Greavy, I'm with Waste Management, and I just wanted to say thank you for the years we've had to service your community. I know we've got an item coming up on the agenda, and to that effect, I sent a letter via email to Mr. Clegg on Friday. I copied each of you, I hope you received it. If you haven't, please let me know. I wanted you to know that I'm here this evening to answer questions, if you have them, about what I proposed in the letter. I thought it was a lower-cost, more certain, and lower-risk solution for the city, and hopefully all of you have had a chance to take a look at that and will give it due consideration, which I'm certain you will. So with that, again, we're proud to be your service provider, we're thankful that we've had the opportunity all these years, and again, if you have questions when we get to that item on the agenda, I wanted you to know I was here to answer those questions. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak before the council this evening? I declare public comment time closed then, and we'll move on to consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Archibald. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Harris, we will take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Mohler.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. The items on the consent agenda, there was, adopted a resolution, objecting to the renewal of certain liquor licenses because of delinquent property taxes, utility payments, or income tax reporting. Confirm the appointment of Hannah Lydier to the Beautification Commission for a term to expire January 30th, 2016. Confirm the appointment of David Haynes to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority to fill a vacancy for a term to expire April 14th, 2014. Confirm the reappointment of Kevin Banker, Kathy Holth, and William Vogon to the Historic District Commission for terms to expire March 10th, 2016. And confirm the appointment of Ron Roline to the Tax Increment Finance Authority to fill a vacancy for a term to expire September 14th of this year, 2013. And also an ordinance, we gave it a second reading and enactment, which is an ordinance to amend Chapter 24, Fire Prevention and Protection of the Code of Ordinances of the City, for the purpose of updating that chapter. And at this point then, we will move on with from the city manager, number one.
Is accepting the bid from Peerless Midwest Incorporated in the amount of $18,994 for the removal and installation of a booster pump at the municipal office center.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Archibald. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz, is there discussion? Hearing none, we'll take the vote.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Mohler.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. We'll move on to item number two.
Is accepting the bid from Blue Water Lift Truck Services Incorporated in the amount of $21,615 for an LPG-powered forklift for use at the wastewater treatment plant.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Cole, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Harris, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Harris.
I guess just my question there, just looking briefly at the bid, is this a new lift truck?
I believe we can answer from Eric Witter.
Mayor Rep., Councilmembers, that is a new lift truck being purchased.
Thank you.
Any other questions while he's standing up? Nope. Okay, thank you. We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, and we'll move on to item number three.
Is accepting the bid from McGuckins Mechanical LLC in the amount of $19,000 for the installation of primary pumps at the wastewater treatment plant.
Do we have a motion?
Some moved.
Mayor Protam Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ruiz, is there discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Number four.
Is accepting the bid from Markot Disposal Company Incorporated in the amount of $7,503,562 and 12 cents for solid waste collection services.
Do we have a motion?
Some moved.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Archibald. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Cole, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Oh, go ahead. I knew there was. Yes, Councilmember Cole.
I would just like to ask if we could get clarification for exactly what services will be provided in this bid, how that compares to what we currently have.
Okay, I believe Mr. Brennan is going to answer.
Yes, Mayor Rep. and Council, this contract is for the exact same services we're currently receiving. As you know, it will, the revenue in that fund is enough to cover the exact same services we're currently receiving for at least three years, hopefully longer, and as we outlined at the last meeting, if revenues came up short, we could either look at dropping the recycling program for years four and five, or having the voters choose whether or not they want to pay for that through a heavily override, which is a little less than two tenths of a mil, and that would fund the recycling program for years four and five. But that's a decision we won't have to make for the next three years.
And that's assuming, that's assuming...
That's assuming who knows what property tax revenues they're going to do in the next three years, so, yes, that's correct.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Cole.
I just wanted to ask, the large containers that we're able to have for an additional cost, will similar products be available?
Yes, they will have those. The cost might be slightly higher than you're currently paying, but I believe it's going to be in about the $4 range rather than $3, but it's going to be in the same type of container.
Similar size, size and covered wheels?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
I believe Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, Mayor Rep., I guess there's some of the questions I have here. I think at our last discussion, we had said that we were kind of going to seek a little public input, and I don't think we've done a good job of getting public input to find where we're going. I've only got a couple of emails, and both of them said retaining the same service. I guess the other thing that I think I have to look at, I just got done not too long ago, the past weekend, contacted Port Huron Township. They just had a similar circumstance like we had, and they had two bids that come in close. In the process, they chose waste management for the simple reason they found that waste management has a higher degree of recycling products than Markot, who was the other bidder in their process. And plus, there, the other thing, problem I have is a three-year cycle with this. We know what three years is going to do, but we don't go beyond that, and I think to extend a contract more than three years would not be good for the city of Port Huron.
Could I speak to that?
Yes, you can.
Part of the issue is the amount of equipment that they have to purchase, leaf vacuums, trash trucks, to amortize that cost over three years rather than five years makes a large amount of difference in the cost that we would end up paying. They eventually would have to recover enough revenue to pay those machines off within three years rather than five years, so that's why typically we've gone for five years and we've gotten better bids doing that.
Before I, I just have one quick question while you're standing there before I open it up further. The difference between the low bid and the next bid is how much for all of the services, which is what we're offering?
Two hundred thousand. It's two hundred thousand. You want the sheet? Two hundred thousand, okay. Give or take.
I thought it was more than that.
For the same services?
For the same services? I thought it was more than that. I don't have mine in front of me.
Looks like a million dollars.
Yeah, I thought I was...
That's the one we're voting on. It's about eight hundred thousand, actually.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. Well, this is the one we're voting on right here, the alternate. Yeah, the alternate for the five years is... It's two hundred thousand. Is that seven million, five oh three? Seven million, five oh three. Eight thousand. And for, and Tara actually is second, and that's eight million, three oh one over the five years, so it's about eight hundred thousand over the five years.
Eight hundred thousand difference. But, so really, so I guess I'm just putting in perspective, waste management was not even the number-two bidder?
No.
They were the number-three bidder?
Correct.
Okay. Questions for, yes, Councilmember Lewandowski?
In this contract, is it going to require the garbage trucks to be less than eight years old like the current contract?
Yes.
Yes, all right. And then, are we going to require them to be bonded? Instead, I don't like the idea of the line of credit. Are we going to require them to be bonded? Been writing?
Robin, do you want to come up to the podium, just so everybody can hear you?
Yeah, we are going to allow them to do the letter of credit, but it will have to meet our requirements through, it has to have the same requirements as the bond, and it will have to be approved.
Mayor Rep., I'd like to offer an amendment to this. I would like to see this be bonded. I don't like the idea of a letter of credit to this. If something happens like it did back in the 90s when, I know, World Waste went out of business, anybody can have a letter of credit pulled from them at some point, and I don't like that idea, so I would like to offer amendment that this would be approved of bond, be imboned.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Councilmember Harris. I guess discussion on that alone right now is just on the bonding issue, and I guess I would ask the question myself, what difference is there between the letter of credit bonding as far as our protections?
I think that's a legal question.
Now we come to a third person.
More people out there.
Yeah, anybody else want to go?
You know, truthfully, I wouldn't know without actually looking at the documentation, so I haven't seen the documentation at this point. I would assume that, you know, it can be crafted in such a way that it would provide the protections that Councilmember Lewandowski is concerned about.
I think that's basically what your concern is, that we're protected in the same manner, isn't it?
Well, yeah, definitely. I'm concerned we had that issue back in the 90s, when I think it was World Waste, I'm not sure exactly when it was, but they went under, you know, it would cost the city a couple of million dollars at that point in time. Waste management always was required to be bonded, and all the other ones were too. I won't vote on this if they're not bonded. A letter of credit can be pulled at, you know, from one year to year, or from whenever it happened, so I'm not comfortable with voting when it's a letter of credit.
Okay. Any other discussion on the bonding?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Moller.
Was that correct, when Robin said they're going to have to be bonded? Is that before the contract goes into place, or no?
All of the requirements of the contract will have to be signed and verified, and legal counsel will verify all of their paperwork before the contract is executed.
So, do they have to be bonded before the contract goes into effect?
In the proposal, they could either submit a bond or a letter of credit. We've got some requirements for both of those.
One or the other, then?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mayor, before she walks away.
Yeah.
They can have a letter of credit then as an option to enter into the contract at any point, and that would be for the entire contract?
Correct.
They don't have to then turn around and be bonded at any point?
No.
How long does the letter of credit go? I mean, I guess I don't...
That I don't know the details of, so...
Mayor, if I have one follow-up to that, is there a reason they prefer a letter of credit over bonding? Can they not get bonded? Do we know the answer to that?
I don't know the answer to that. I think it's a financial, but I don't really know the reasons for that.
I don't know if we want to go outside this. I think there's a representative from Markot, am I correct, that has an answer to that question? If that's okay with council, just so we can have an answer. If you'd like to come to the podium, we'll just add another person up there. If you'd give us your name, though, so we know who we're...
Hi, I'm Tracy Kaplan, CEO and owner at Markot Disposal, and the reason why we go with the letter of credit, it is a cost-saving measure for everybody. The bonding costs a little bit more. We can certainly do it if that's what you prefer, but in the contract documents and the RFP, it asked for either-or, which I think all of your RFPs have in past asked for either-or. We only, we only go with the letter of credit because it's a lot more cost-effective, and that's basically why we were able to keep our bid down quite a bit more.
Do you have any questions further?
We are capable of doing both. We have a letter of credit with the city of Sarnia right now. Currently, we have all of the Lampden County, basically, in Canada, and then we have Grant Township that we service with letters of credit, St. Clair Township, Fort Grashit. We have several other municipalities that we do service with the letters of credit, so...
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember.
If we were to change this to a requirement of bonding as opposed to a letter of credit, would that change your bid?
I would have to add a bit more cost for that, yes.
You don't know how much, though, I assume?
I could, I could certainly get some numbers for you. I think it's, I think it's, the difference is roughly about six or $7,000 more a year. A letter of credits, they include in our banking fees, so they charge us a one-time annual fee, and they are annual, just like a bond. They don't do five-year bonds anymore. They do annual bonds, so it's basically the exact same thing.
Okay.
Is that good?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
So, I guess I would ask the question, if we were to require bonding and they had to increase the cost because we required it and it wasn't in the RFP as a guaranteed, they'd still be the low bidder, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we still have that issue for amendment to require them to be bonded. Is there any other discussion on that?
Mayor Rep., question for Robin, then.
Yes.
The other two bidders, were they bonded or credited?
Well, nobody has submitted anything, but it would be bonding, I believe.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the amendment?
We asked them to be bonded. Do we have to go rebidding, or just something we can add on as such? Does it throw the process out?
I guess I'll ask legal counsel.
No, I don't think a change like that would throw the process out, no.
And can I ask legal counsel what legal counsel recommends in paying some respect to Councilman Lewandowski and his concern about something that happened years ago? It doesn't sound good for the city. Is that something you recommend we have them bonded?
It's really a financial consideration, you know, if you want to pay the extra money to make sure you have the protection, you know, that's an option, so it's really a...
Consider it a good protection to have?
That is, yes, that is a little better, yes. I would say, yes.
And yet, the representative from Markot saying that all those other customers that they're working with is with letters of credit.
Yeah, I mean, your concern is, your concern would come into play if you had concerns about the financial condition of the company.
Thank you.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember.
Question for legal counsel.
Yes.
Forgot her name, but the lady from Markot, CEO. Is it correct that bonding and the credit is only good for one year, no matter what?
I don't know what the terms are. I haven't seen the terms.
Because if it's only for one year, I mean, so you're out in the third month, so you're out three months or whatever, and we still save money by going to the cheaper one, but if it's all, if it's, if the bonding's good for five years and the credit can be pulled, as Councilman Lewandowski said, at any time, then you're out four years. I can see where we could take a major hit, but...
Yeah, I would have to defer to Markot on that one, with them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on the amendment for bonding? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Moller?
How, explain how we're voting.
We're just voting to...
I know what we're voting on, but how is the, yes or no? How, what's the difference? Yes?
Yes is requiring bonding.
No.
Councilmember Ruiz?
No.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
No.
Motion fails.
So, now we're back to the original motion, which is to accept the bid from Markot Disposal. Do we have more discussion on that?
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
I have a question, it has probably nothing to do with the contract per se, but I have been contacted by some business people, and they want to know why they pay property taxes for waste management, and yet their waste won't be picked, doesn't, isn't picked up or is excluded from being picked up by the city. They want to know if they can get a tax break if they're paying a tax for it and their trash can't be picked up. Several of the restaurants downtown have contacted me and said that they pay the property tax for the service, and yet they are not entitled to use the service because they're just not entitled to use it because they have too much trash or whatever.
I was going to say, it has to do with the quantity, I believe, but I think Robin Berry could probably answer that one.
Yes, the way this contract is bid is on a residential basis, and we know through experience that residential properties generate, you know, a certain amount of tonnage a year. Those commercial properties are allowed to set out what average residents would set out in a year, which is either four trash bags or two cans. If they exceed that amount, then they really exceed the amount of a residential collection, and if we permitted all commercial properties to do that, we wouldn't be able to afford the service for our residents because, as you know, some commercial properties...
I understand, but they're understanding why they have to pay property tax then for the service that they're not getting any service for.
Well, they're entitled to the, you know, four bags or two cans.
Jeez, don't ride by my house, Robin, especially after Christmas. Holy...
So, they could put four bags out and still hire somebody separately to do their major, so it's there if they want to take the middle.
And there are several businesses in the downtown area that do comply, can't comply with those requirements and do get that collection service.
Thank you for the answer.
Thank you.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Ruiz.
I want to ask her a question about recycling.
I think she has to come back.
Harris talked about talking to someone, and I think one of the local communities, and talked about recycling and not perhaps measuring up to, I think that's what he said.
Yeah, Bob Lewandowski at Port Huron Township said that was consensus of the, their supervisors out there. out there.
Would you rephrase what you said, what he said?
Even though he voted for Marcot, he said it was a consensus of the board to select waste management because they had a more complete process of handling recyclables.
I can't speak to what the township does, but we have some specifications in our proposal that require all of the materials to be co-mingled, collectible. And Marcot will be providing that same service that waste management is currently providing.
No change in what we have now?
Absolutely not.
Thanks.
So we can put the same things in our recycle bins we do now?
Absolutely.
Co-mingle, as you said, okay. Thank you.
There appeared to be a difference in plastics though. I think waste management will pick up number fours and fives or fives and sevens or something like that. And it appeared that Marcot did, is that a factor?
No, not for our contract. What they were doing in the other townships, I'm not aware of, but we have our own specifications and they need to comply with those.
While you're standing there, let me ask you, it was brought up to me about safety.
Mm-hmm.
And someone had contacted me and wondered, you know, whether their vehicles were as safe or had they ever been sighted, et cetera, et cetera. So can you address that a little bit?
I wouldn't be aware if their vehicles had ever been sighted, but I did ask Tracy about their safety record and she has, you know, assured us that they have an impeccable safety standard. When I spoke to all of their current and some past municipal municipalities that they serve, nobody raised any concerns at all about safety, work ethic, none of those issues ever came up.
Okay.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
This is for Robin too. I guess it's my understanding, waste management provides some free services for special events in the city, is that?
Sure.
Is Marcot going to do the same thing for us?
Well, we'll work through those as those events come up. Don't worry of all those, of all those same events, Alan.
All right. I just curious, I assumed it was a free service if this was part of the contract that?
Any other questions for Robin while she's up? I don't know if you would address it or not, but in regard to the request from waste management from Mr. Greavy, his suggestion was that we eliminate the recycling part of it and then we could do it more cost-effective for us. And then I believe, if I'm not mistaken, not to put words in his mouth, but I think that it was then that individual property owners would then pay for their own service if they so desired. And, but even if you did that, which is not something I'm advocating, because I do believe that the property owners and our residents enjoy having the recycling. And we do have an ordinance that says you are to recycle, although it's a little hard to enforce that. But we do have an ordinance, so it's not optional. You know, just to take it out and say to people, if you want to do it, you pay for it. And if you don't want to do it, you don't. So I guess I just wanted to bring that point up, that we do have an ordinance that does mandate people to recycle.
Right.
Whether everybody does it or not, of course, is another issue.
Right.
And I still believe that even if that were taken out, I don't believe in it. It's probably Ed that has to answer that. That brings them down to even being the low bidder at that point. Would I be correct or, I looked at the charts, but I didn't print them off at home.
Yeah, the first three years of the five-year contract as prepared by Marcot would cost about $4,421 in total. And the three years that waste management has sent you a letter about would cost about $4,459 without recycling, which is about $38,000 more over the three years. Plus, the citizens who want to take advantage of recycling would be charged for that individually rather than the city paying for it. So it is more costly.
Okay. I thought so. And I just wanted to bring that up because I know he had, you know, they had put that as a request, but I didn't see that as a real option, so. Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion before we vote on this issue?
I guess maybe one more question. Is our type of request for payment, like in the property taxes, is it comparable to what the township has? The township, basically, they bill it quarterly with their other utilities and like right now, what they proved is $11.99 per month, per unit. And it's going to go up to, I think, $12.35 the next year cycle. And I don't know if that fee is equivalent to our fee or?
I don't know. I don't even know if anybody has an answer to that because I'm sure we don't know exactly what their services are and they are paid for in a different manner than what ours are paid for. So I don't know that you can compare the two that way.
It'd be difficult, yeah.
Yeah. Unless somebody has a better answer than I have. Is there any other discussion?
Mayor Rep, I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Moeller.
I need to be educated here on waste management. I understand it's an international company. Marcot, my understanding, which may be limited here, I thought it was a local company. Somebody help me out, educate me. Is Marcot the same as Waste Management International? Is big or are they just a local company?
I think they're international, but I think I'd have to ask them to, if they could, Tracy, is it? Could you just answer that, please?
Sure, yes, we are just in Sarnia and Portier.
So you're local, other than?
We are local. We are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does that answer then?
Educated me, I was right, so, okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Then we will take the vote.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
No.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
No.
Councilmember Moeller.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Cole.
Before we move on, can we reconsider? I'd like to ask council to reconsider the Sperry's Vault bits that were proposed.
There were two, I believe, wasn't there two? Do you have those perchance?
Thank you.
I assume you want to reconsider both of them because one was funding and the other one was?
Was it funding the bid?
And we need a second for reconsideration? Pass. Is there a second for reconsideration?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Ruiz. Then I believe you need a motion to, or do you?
We vote on this.
On the reconsideration first? This is just on the reconsideration?
Correct.
Okay? We're not voting on any items and then the clerk will read. This is on both of those things. One was for the bid of body construction for $141,954.43 for the Sperry's Vault abandonment project. And the other one was the funding mechanism by transferring funds within accounts, correct? And right now, we're only voting on just reconsideration, not on the items, just to reconsider. Go ahead.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
No.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Moeller.
No.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. So now you, we need a motion to adopt those two items.
I move to adopt the two items.
Okay, Councilmember Cole, is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Protem Archibald, is there a discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Councilmember Cole already beat you to it, just a second.
I just wanted to say again that I appreciate the representatives coming forward tonight to talk to us about the progress. I think that's important. I look forward to hearing from them on a regular basis. I know that this was part of an obligation that the city had made, but it's still nice to hear from the other parties on the progress, particularly when it's difficult to see from the outside, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Moeller.
I just wanted to say that I think this is a typical example of the government wasting money, ramming something down the public's throat. This is in the contract. If they meet requirements, we'll be more glad to support what we signed in the contract. We're violating the contract just to appease these people and have the taxpayers pay for it. I'll be voting no.
Is there any other discussion, comments?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Mayor Protem Archibald.
Could I get clarification on that comment, please, on what it is they needed to meet in the contract and how we'd be violating it? I apologize, I was not here last week or two weeks ago, so I did not hear all the discussion. So I don't know who can clarify that, but what is exactly in the contract and what were they to meet before we were to fill the obligation to fill these vaults?
We will have our legal counsel answer that.
Yeah, let me address a couple issues that are related to that. The first thing I wanted to make sure you're aware of is that our original memorandum of understanding was actually with an entity called Landmark Development LLC. The entity that currently owns the building is a different legal entity at this point in time, Sperry's Landmark, Inc. So from a contractual standpoint, right now, we do not have an obligation to fix the vault to the entity that currently owns it. So the first thing we'd have to do is get the contract changed and basically sign up the new owner if we're interested in going forward with the same deal. So if you look at this, you know, our original agreement said it can't be assigned without our permission. Right now, we haven't entered into a contractual relationship with the actual owner. So that's the first thing. That's something that if the city council is satisfied with the new legal entity and the progress they're making, that's something that could be taken care of in relatively short order. But that would be the first thing that I would want to make sure happens. So if you're going to vote to, you know, fix the vault, I would make it conditioned upon getting the contractual document signed up with the new owner. That'd be the first thing I'd do. As far as the agreement, assuming that we allow them to step into the place of Landmark, which was the part we entered the contract with originally, there are a number of obligations that they have that specified. I can't, you know, read them all to you because there are about a ton of them. And there are several obligations that we had. My understanding is we've complied with basically everything except the vault part of this. So yes, it is fair to require that there be progress on their side before we complete all of ours. You know, a contractual relationship has mutual obligations that flow both ways and, you know, obviously, you know, we've seen some evidence of some progress towards those today. But the first thing I'd want to do is clean up the contract, if you will, and get it with the right entity.
Thank you.
Mayor Rep.
Councilmember Moeller.
We were informed by the city manager for, Mayor Protem, which wasn't here, we were informed by the city manager that they had to have a certain occupancy level before we were required to pay this by contract. And that has not been met yet. And that's why I voted no against it and that's why I will vote no against it now. They have not met their requirement. Now, if they have, then that's news. And if that's not part of the requirement, then Mr. Brown told us the falsehood, so please clarify.
Yeah, I don't, you know, I'd have to go back through and read through all the 10 obligations. I don't know, you know, I'm not familiar with the specific.
So we'll, I'll accept the fact that Mr. Brown was telling us the truth and they haven't met their requirements.
Yeah, I mean, there's, obviously, it's a two-way street, if you will.
Thank you.
Did they, it's, I don't know, I don't know what's in that agreement for sure, either. Is there a requirement in there for them to have an occupancy before we finished our part of the agreement?
I don't remember, to be honest with you.
Yeah, there's 11 paragraphs, I could go through it.
It's probably in there, but.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Mayor Protem Archibald.
Having been in there on multiple occasions and seen the condition of the vaults in the basement, not going to excuse that away if it is a requirement, but I do understand the complexity of getting a tenant and running out a building that is leaking for multiple different reasons. I, I think this is an eye contour downtown and I think we need to do whatever we need to do to help it move forward, if in good faith, they're going to do the same. I understand the contract has changed, the owner has changed, but it wasn't this sitting council that entered into the agreement in that contract that said we would fill the vaults. And I think ethically and morally, if that was an agreement that was made by a previous council, we should honor that agreement.
Are you saying, just so I can clarify what you said earlier, are you asking that we perhaps have an amendment to this motion that requires, upon acceptance of the bid, that the documents be changed to reflect the ownership change?
Right, you would have to really enter into a separate contract with the current owner.
But we could amend?
And I would make, I would want to make sure that that's, you know, a condition to us proceeding with the contract you're talking about.
Mayor Rep.
We're doing this, you know, we'd be doing this for a reason other than the contract.
Correct. Yes, Councilmember Moeller.
If we don't have that contract with them to take care of the vault, then it doesn't go back to what Mr. Harris brought up at the last council meeting. According to city ordinance, they're responsible for filling that vault and taking care of it themselves. Unless we have a contract stating that we were going to take care of it if they met those requirements. So if we don't have a contract with these entities, then by city ordinance, if, now I don't know the city ordinance, but Mr. Harris quoted it, the landlord is responsible to take care of the vault themselves.
Yeah, that I'm not sure about. I'd have to look at that.
Well, I think we would want to know that before we vote on it. We certainly wouldn't want to violate our own ordinances now, would we?
I don't see it as a violation of your ordinance issue.
I believe that that was brought up, that that was the case, but I, I'm under the understanding that even though the developer has never changed, it's always been Mr. White and his partner. The only thing that has changed is the technicality of the property owner, but not the developer. I guess you could go on a technicality and, like you said, and say, well, we don't, no longer have an agreement, but I guess I'm more of the mind, we made an agreement and it's still a moral agreement that we, they carried forward with the purchase of the property and doing what they've done under the basis that we would take care of this. The fact that legally, you know, it's not legally or the technicality of changing the ownership name is like taking an out that you might find in something. All of a sudden, you find the fine print and you decide, well, that's how I'm going to get out of this. And I just don't see us as looking for that because I think that we all have the best interest of having that building restored to the beauty that it was at one time. And if they walked away from it, and I'm just saying, if they walked away from it and it starts to crumble down, what do we have then? And no one else is going to come in and buy it in the condition that it is. So that's my thoughts on it, but.
I guess my only thought is, like I brought up in the past, we're basically violating the city ordinance. I don't know who made the deal with the Landmark LLC, but to change and violate the ordinance, but I know if you or I or anybody else, City of Portier or somebody in my neighborhood would chose to announce that they're violating the ordinance, something would definitely happen. And I just, I just can't support violating a city ordinance.
Yeah, I don't see that as a violation of a city ordinance issue. You know, if you, you know, there's nothing that would prohibit you from entering into a contract that provides that you will provide a particular service. You know, as long as it meets the general requirements of an appropriate governmental function, so. No, that's, that wouldn't be violating the ordinance entering into a contract of that nature.
Well, the original mover was Councilmember Cole. I don't know if she just wants to include it to say, subject to the change of title of the property owner?
Yeah, I would like to make a contingent on that. I believe it was a memorandum of understanding being passed to the new ownership.
And who seconded it, I'm sorry?
Councilmember Archibald.
For support.
Okay, just so that, that's covered.
Absolutely.
Any more discussion? We'll take a vote.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
No.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Moeller.
No.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.